Members, it's time, I would like to. Welcome the Director of Administration, the. Head of Policy Innovation and Coordination Office, Director of Legal Aid, Director of Audit. And Commissioner of the ICAC as well as the Secretary General Lesko and Ambossman. And their teams. Now, if you members you wish to speak, please press click on the raise hand feature zoom to so indicate. I will invite the first member to speak before I read out the speaking order, Mr. Ronic Chan for minutes, please. Mr. Ronic Chan, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is on CSO 007, which is the Rental Enforcement Moratorium. Of course, we know the government has good intention. It wants to help specified industries, so there is some proving space for them. And then perhaps after the pandemic, they could recover quickly and we could save the jobs of employees. But then if we go for legislative rather than the administrative approach. It's probably because the government thinks that most landlords won't be cooperative. But then under the during epidemic, the banks have been very cooperative and supportive of government measures. If we go for the legislative rather than the administrative approach, I wonder if there is enough evidence to show that many banks would not cooperate with the government. I wonder if the government has done any. Research in that. Now, I have three questions. In the reply, it said that the. There will be some over 100 dozen cases of. Moratorium of rates payment, but then there are no addresses, so we can't, they can't give us the exact figure. But even if you don't have the addresses, you should have some median figures to show that what is the. Rates level for for most. And so why don't want you do an estimate? Second question is that you're going to give $100,000 of substitute landlords to help them tide over. The tough times. So how many cases do you expect there to be? What if the number of cases exceed what you expect? Now you say that you have set aside provisions under the 100% personal loan guarantee scheme. But what if there that number of cases exceed your expectation? Where will you get the funds? And then the third question is the administrative fees for the whole rental enforcement or a tournament scheme. Where were you going to get? What is the estimated additional administrative cost involving the rating valuation department and so on? Director of Administration. Perhaps I would invite Mr. Chat Wing Hang Advisor of the Financial Secretary's Private Office to take this question. Can you hear us? Yes, we can. In response to the three questions of Mr. Chan, first, whether we've done any survey. Or research to find that the banks may not cooperate, and that's why we go for the legislative approach. Now, when we formulate. Well, we formulate this measure because we want to prohibit landlords from. Taking actions against tenants who fail to pay rents in accordance with the tenancy conditions. Such as, you know, recovering residence area or reposssession of the unit. So why do we have to? Include banks in the bill is not because we think banks won't. Work with us, but rather in a cause of consultation, many small landlords have expressed this concern. So to lay the concern. We had discussion with the Monetary Authority and the. As Hong Kong Bank Association. And so that's why we have included this provision to prevent, to bend, to prohibit banks from taking actions. This is just to give assurance to people. It's not that we expect there will be a major problem here. Your second question. More the moratorium. Do we expect many? Businesses to apply to suspend the payment of government. Government rent and rates. Well, we have talked to the race and valuation department about that in the database that they're not able to see. Which addresses come under the list of special premises in the reference regulation? So that's why it's hard to do any estimate. For non-domestic properties. There is some rates concession, of course, announced under the budget, and that would help businesses or. Or the landlords, because of course, the question then is whether is the landlord or the tenant is responsible for paying rates under the tenancy agreement. Now, as for. We paying $100,000 or three months arrangement. And if there are too many landlords requiring the assistance, and we have additional resources. Under the 100% personal loan guarantee scheme. Well, we don't expect that to happen. In 2021, when we introduced the measure, where there was a provision of $15 billion for the scheme. And as at March this year. 38,000 applications have been approved involving. $2.6 billion or so. So. That's only a small percentage of the total provision. And with this rental enforcement or a tournament initiative, if landlords need to apply for the loan, we believe we have sufficient provision. To handle with those applications. Last question on administrative cost. Now, for the Hong Kong Monetary Authority, the Rating and Valuation Department. Or even the Financial Services Office, we're using existing offices, resources to. Formulate and implement the scheme so it doesn't involve additional costs. For members, Mr. Sunny Chan, Mr. Paul Chan, Mr. Michael Look and Miss Elizabeth Quod, they want to ask questions. So since there aren't too many members asking questions, so each will have five minutes, Mr. Sunny 10. Thank you. My question is on the CSO 1010. Says here. The Innovation and Technology Bureau maybe restructure, rename the Innovation Technology Industry Bureau. And after the CE election on the 8th of May, the proposal would be forwarded to the CE elect. And then this government will help the government with preparing the relevant legislative amendment exercises also that. Then when the new government takes office and the new structure could come into place. Now renaming the Bureau to Innovation Technology Industry Bureau would tell the public that. The this bureau is responsible for industrial re-inustrialization. And then it will help to promote the work of industrialization. So with this. Timetable, let's say they see lack makes a decision perhaps of June or earlier. Then is it possible for the new structure, government structure to come in place when the new government takes office? Because you know, with this restructuring exercise, it's not just about renaming bureau. There are actual operations involved. It's about bringing technology in industrialization together. Yes. I'm from the Innovation Technology. Commission, I'm from a pickle rather. Yes, there will be a tight time there because the election has been deferred to the 8th of May. But then we have reviewed the situation and we're confident that we will be able to. Do that with the cooperation of Lesko members. Because with some. Establishment of post-creation proposals, we need to go to the establishment subcommittee and the finance committee. And also, we have to go to the council meeting to amend the reference legislation so that we could transfer statutory functions from one policy bureau to another. There will be a tight timeframe, but we our target remains the same. This is Sunday 10, any follow up, please? No, I have no more questions. Thank you. Next then. Mr. Tong Yijie. Thank you. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CSO 015, a question asked by Miss Elizabeth Quod on legal aid. I note that. Some defendants apply for legal aid and that's approval. And then they use taxpayers money to hire lawyers to for their case. And we see that with the black cat violence. Cases, there's a similar situation. At the same time, they are doing crowdfunding, some of these defendants. That is, and then there are certain humanitarian aid fund that offers a legal assistance and so on. The legal aid department states that applicants have to declare. Third-party assistance in accordance of the law. And then if they will assess the case and they may refer to the reference cases to the police if. Necessary. So I want to ask how many such cases have been referred to the police that have any arrests been made? Or have anyone been prosecuted? Would take the question, please? Can I ask the Director of Legal Aid to take the question? Now, about the. Asking for disclosure of third-party assistance, so far we don't have any figures about. Failure to. Disclose the reference information and therefore referring these cases to the police. So far, there have been no such cases. But then all I can say is say in general, we find that applicant has not disclosed. All of his own financial information, so we may either reject the application or withdraw the legal certificate. Or we have actually referred such cases to the police before for investigation. In 2022, or rather in 2021. There were 58 cases referred to the police for investigation. And these cases about whether the applicants have honestly disclosed their financial position. Or whether they have tried to hide anything. And then in 2022, so far, there are 10 cases. So this is a figures for your reference, but of course, we will closely monitor the situation. Chairman, I'd like to follow up. So you're still doing investigation and. You have not yet taken any further action in for any case. Now, it's said in reply that in December 2012, 21, you introduced a new declaration system. Does he mean that in the past you did not? Give due consideration to this aspect. That's why you only have the new decoration system recently. And how would this system help?
Director. Chairman. All along, we have been. Reviewing the declaration system by applicants to declare their sources of financial aid. As for financial aid received from a third party. It has attracted. A certain level of public interest in recent years, some organizations or bodies claim that they would provide aid to applicants. And that was what triggered our review last year. However, the system was installed before last year. For any sources of financial aid, including assets and income. In the past, we had required applicants to declare any such sources of financial aid in an honest manner. So we have always adopted the same standards. I asked about the new declaration system. I'd like to know what objectives it would serve. Can you tell us about the benefits of the new declaration system? Under the new declaration system, if applicants declare any sources of financial aid from a third party. We would decide whether the applicants have the means to take out litigation. Even if they are eligible for legal aid by law, if there's any suspicion from outside. We have the right to reject the application. Mr. Michael Look. Thank you, Chairman. In the budget. The government announced. Legislation on rental enforcement moratorium for a period of three months. I'd like to ask about SCO. 009. The answer covered most of the questions asked. That was the question asked by Ms. S Mac. The question was whether relief would be offered to SMEs so that we can avoid mass layoffs. And the FTU was supportive of the proposal. At the end of the day, SMEs still have to pay rents even with the three-month. Enforcement moratorium. Did the government get in touch with or urge? Landlords to come up with rental concessions. I believe the big landlords are in a position to offer. Rent concessions. And I believe this is in their business interests as well. If. Many businesses close down, this would not be helpful for. The landlords as well. So I'd like to know. What the government has done specifically. To encourage the big landlords to offer rent concessions. Since the budget was announced, while the legislation is yet to come into effect. So in the past month or two. Did the government know of any situations in which. Rent was recovered aggressively by landlords? Does the government maintain reference statistics, Mr. Chair? As to whether the government urged big landlords to offer rent concessions to their tenants. In fact, over the past year or two. The government did make a plea to the landlords. But unfortunately, from what we heard, not many landlords were willing to offer such concessions. And that was why we decided to introduce such legislation. As to whether we maintain any statistics on the recovery of rent by. Landlords, we do not actually maintain such data. But days after the Financial Secretary announced his budget. We saw that three developers. Filed an application to call to recover some $25 million of rents across 71 applications. We saw that we we saw that the number of cases in which landlords recovered rents from their tenants multiplied after. The initiative was announced. The bill has been endorsed by the Bills Committee and on April the 27th. Resumption of second reading and third reading would take place at the council. And. There is an exemption provision in place under the legislation. Which stipulates that. So long as the tenant and landlord enters into a written agreement within the three-month protection period. So long as a written agreement is in place, the legislation. Would not be applicable. At the Bills Committee, we learned that some landlords. Were willing to negotiate with tenants. Such that certain exceptions or concessions. Would be offered. We do not have the exact numbers, but we believe that the exemption provision has proved effective. Miss Elizabeth Quod, members who wish to speak, please press the button. Miss Quod. I'd like to follow up on my own question. CSO 015 about legal aid. I'd like to know whether there's any abuse of legal aid. Bogus refugees have been abusing non-refundment claims system for years. Hong Kong is spending more than a billion less per year. And in a in recent years, we have spent about $7 billion already, notwithstanding the legal aid fees. For years, I have been asking whether there's any abuse of legal aid, especially. For non-refundment claimants, they would apply for legal aid and then file a judicial review. And as such, they can continue to stay in Hong Kong during this period. The legal aid department said that was not an issue. From the reply, we saw that a few dozen cases were granted every year in legal fees. Some $30 million were spent every year amounting to a total of $100 million across three years. I think that was certainly not money worth spending. For non-refundment claimants who filed judicial review. After applying legal aid. So the longer they stay in Hong Kong, the more resources they would expend. And that would create a threat to our security. So. Can they choose their own solicitor or barrister representatives? There was a change to the legal aid system in which applicants. Might no longer. Get to choose their own. Representatives or lawyers. So in terms of non-refundment claims. I asked whether they were designated lawyers and the LED said they did not maintain such statistics. If we know that some people were actually encouraging these claimants to apply for legal aid and file judicial. Reviews and. If we continue to offer. Legal aid to these applicants and allow these lawyers or law firms to. Conduct such acts, then I think that would be to the detriment of our taxpayers. I think less than 1% of the applicants were genuine refugees. So this is certainly a problem we must tackle. I also asked about. Funding from a third party. Legal aid is designed to. Uphold justice for those without the financial means. But if they have the means, they should not spend taxpayers' money. There are no provisions or requirements in place to include the calculation of any funding from a third party. This is a loophole that must be plugged. Director of Legal Aid. Miss Quod asked how long we need to spend to approve or vet these. Applications. Our target is to vet a civil case within three months. So our goal is to complete vetting of an allegation in three months regardless of the outcome. And after that, the. Judicial proceedings would begin and the pace would. Depend on the progress of the case, and this is something beyond the control of the legal aid department. As for the choice of lawyers for cases related to judicial reviews or non-refundment claims. According to section 13 of the legal aid ordinance, the. Applicants can nominate their preferred lawyers. This is something which has attracted public interest. So in in terms of the. Otis allowed each solicitor or barrister. Could only take up three cases every 12 months, which was a substantial reduction compared with the past. We hope that the new measure could alleviate concerns that. Most cases are handled by a small number of lawyers and we will continue to monitor the situation. Since the measure was put in place. There is, the results have been positive. We saw a decline in the number of, in the average number of cases handled by each lawyer. If you have further questions, I'm happy to supplement. Miss Quod, you asked about funding from a third party. If such sources of funds declared they would be included in the calculation of financial means. If the cap is exceeded, the application would be refused. But if they are still eligible despite receiving third-party financial aid. We would assess whether. They actually need financial aid. Or that there's any abuse of the system. In that case, we have the right to refuse such applications.
Mr. Ambrose Lam, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is for the legal aid department. I received many complaints in the past. That the legal aid department is delaying the payment of fees to lawyers. And sometimes it took a long time for them to assess the cost. So that's why lawyers in particular, the outstanding lawyers are reluctant to take up legal aid cases. And now in the draft estimates, there is a reduction by two point four percent of litigation fees under the legal aid department that would worsen matters. So can you please respond to that? About paying lawyers' fees in particular legal litigation costs while we have taken some measures since twenty twenty. We were keeping close liaison with lawyers. And we think that the time billed is excessive and there's room for you know, if the the time to make payment is too long, they could check it up with us directly. But then we do pay interim fees to lawyers who are handling our cases. So it's not possible that a lawyer never receives a dime from the beginning to the end of the case. It's possible that the lawyer has already received some seventy five percent of the fees. But then for the remaining balance, perhaps we have to wait for cost taxation and accord and so on before we could pay the remaining amount. So it could happen. And also sometimes maybe the lawyers do not provide us with the full documents required. So it would not make it difficult for our colleagues to assess or tax the fees. And so that's and so we our colleagues have to ask for extra documents. And that's why it would lengthen the process. Well, I will perhaps pass on to you actual cases, you know, from the complaints I received. And then we could you could learn more about these cases next. Ms. Doring Kong, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask about CSO zero zero nine rental enforcement moratorium. Some say that the legislative exercise is rather rushed. And it seems that they are rather perfunctory in drafting the bill because there is not even a definition for rent. Because rent would improve a turnover rent, fixed rent or rate payment. Whether they form part of the rent, so on, there's no definition for that. And also, there is no statistics to support this measure. I know you rushed to draft a bill because you wanted to help with small businesses. So you don't have any statistics to support your case. But have you considered doing some statistics? So what the impact would be on the small landlords or landlords on the whole? How many would be of them would not be able to recover rents in area? And what about some landlords? They may not be able to pay their mortgage payment because of the rent moratorium. So you need to find a mechanism to do such to collect such statistics. Because this is such an important bill. So you need to have a mechanism to assess the impact on of this bill on landlords and the effectiveness of the bill. You can't just rely on how much banks would make would lend to landlords in assessing the possible impact. Mr. Chia Kuen Heng. On the definition of rent, we've actually responded to Ms. Kong's question before. Now, in the rent lease agreement, there's a definition for rent there. Now, Ms. Kong referred to turnover rent in some tenancy agreement or lease agreement. It will state that rent is turnover rent. Then that rent means that kind of rent. For statistics, we've explained that too. The Rating and Valuation Department or the government does not require landlords to declare you know, information about the rent collection and so on. Now, if we want the statistics to support this very urgent bill, actually that involves a major survey exercise. And honestly, we do not have the time to carry out such a survey. Now, would there be any we will be doing any statistics after the amount of bill? Well, this protection measure would only last three months. So for a three-month period, do we is it justified really to do a major survey? Now, I think if we ask banks, how many people actually have to use the principal payment moratorium? Well, then, of course, we could discuss that with the Hong Kong Monetary Authority. Now, for the bill, we're just trying to prohibit landlords from recovering rent from tenants. If we have to do a collect such statistics territory-wide, it would be rather challenging. Because the bill doesn't just cover SMEs, but for SMEs alone, there are some three hundred forty thousand SMEs. And here we talk about specified premises. And that alone, the number is close to hundred thirty thousand such businesses. So if we have to do a survey of the scale, you know, with any questionnaire survey and so on, the sample size is just about a thousand or so. And then for a three-month bill, we're going to do a major survey. Maybe we don't cover the full hundred thirty thousand. We just cover half of that sixty thousand. That's a major exercise. Thank you. There's no follow-up. Next, Ms. Chan Yit-Ming. Ms. Chan Yit-Ming. Ms. Chan Yit-Ming, you need to unmute, turn on your microphone. It seems that Ms. Chan Yit-Ming is not there. Are there any other members who wish to speak? Mr. Michael Look. Are you here? Mr. Michael Look, you go ahead first. Thank you. The advisor of the FS Private Office was sincere with his reply. He told us that for certain companies, there's there are more recovery cases than usual. I believe this is some public information, but it seems that the FS Office has to start to compile the statistics. Could you share that statistics with us? Thank you. Who would take that question, please? Mr. Chat Wing Heng, yes, please. For such statistics, maybe we have to collect information online on, you know, suits filed with the court. But perhaps I could give this piece of information to Mr. Look, so he will put his mind at ease. Now, we're saying that for rents with starting before the first of January, that they are starting from the first of January, there can be no recovery. And if the bill commences and the lead, the action is still not completed. If it's been taken out, then it has to be shelved. So if now, we hope that on the twenty seventh of April, the bill will be passed into law. So by that date, the legal action is not yet completed and it has to be shelved until after the end of the protection period. And then the landlord could again exercises her rights under the law. Thank you. The next Miss Elizabeth Quat, five minutes, please. Thank you. If I could continue to follow up on my earlier questions, just now the director of legal aid answered some of my questions. I hope the director would consider this. We know, of course, for civil litigation and criminal litigation, the situation is different. That's why for civil cases, you allow applicants to choose their own lawyers. But then we see that for many, for some non-refiling claims, they rejected by court. And they apply for judicial review and then they apply for legal aid. So you have to keep dealing with such cases. And it imposes heavy burden on the judiciary. So now you see this situation. So you should consider treating non-refiling claims separately. They should not be treated the same as other civil litigation cases because the nature is very different. Now, of course, we have received complaints before. Maybe there are just one or two law firms, you know, monopolizing all such cases or such claims. That is, of course, now you will set a cap on the number of cases that could be handled by any lawyer. But then it doesn't mean the law firms could not still take up all the cases by, you know, rotating lawyers. So at the end, it would just be two or three law firms that take up all the cases. Now, for non-refiling claimants, we know that at at the moment on arrival, you know, when they come off the plane, there will be lawyers ready sending, ready to help them. And some complain that these claimants have been coached by lawyers beforehand. So that and the public are questioning whether there are some law firms, you know, coaching these law reformer claimants who cases are rejected to apply for judicial review. So I think you have to investigate into these cases and deal with them. That's why I think you should treat a non-refiling claim separately than other civil litigation cases. Yeah, I hope you will consider ways so people can't abuse the system and use taxpayers' money on and do courses. I think that's very important. And on alternative sources of financial aid, I think that should be a factor in your assessment of the case. Or if someone has received so much third-party legal financial aid and that person should not apply for legal, I think you should make that very clear. Director of Legal Aid, thank you, Ms. Squad, for your views. It was certainly considered them very carefully. And now you raise a point that is now we have, you know, reduced the number of cases that a lawyer could take up. But then it still ends up to be case that there are just a handful of law firms taking up all the cases. Well, you can rest assured, Ms. Quat, of course, we put a cap on lawyers in terms of cases to get handled. But then if there are law firms that take up many cases, we will still review the situation. We'll see whether this law firm is monopolizing such cases and whether the law firm has enough manpower to take up so many cases. We've done that before. If we find that is this is a problem with certain law firm, even if certain lawyers have not taken up the maximum number of cases, we may still avoid giving cases to such lawyers. So I think that hopefully I that could address your concern. Now, you say that maybe there are law firms or lawyers, you know, help us encouraging non-refiling claimants to file judicial review in our assessment of the case. If we find that to be the case, then we will check it up with the Borough Association and then perhaps they could take a follow-up actions in relation to disciplinary and investigations on. Thank you. I hope the Director of Legal A would really help the public to serve as the gatekeeper because the public are very much concerned about the use of public resources. You know, every dime is some hard-earned cash for the public. We shouldn't, we don't want to spend it on unjustified courses. Thank you.
Miss Lily and Ken. Miss Miss Common Ken. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on CSO zero zero six, which was a question asked by Miss Ali on the Director of Administration. It was about the proposal to reorganize the government structure. And this is related to the Chief Executive Elect's office. I believe the reply did not carry in details. It explained how the current term government will support the Chief Executive Elect's office, ensure that sufficient resources are set aside, etc. I'd like to know more about the Chief Executive Elect's office. It says the responsibility of the CSO. And in the future, how will the establishment change? How can we ensure that there will be a seamless transition? Mr. Shang. I will answer part of the question and then I will defer to Ms. Ho. Miss Ken asked about the Chief Executive Elect's office, its setting up and the interactions with the current term government. The setting up of the C Elect's office to reference from the arrangement five years ago, five years ago in terms of establishment and the office arrangement. After the Chief Executive Elect was decided, an office would be set up immediately. And the current term government would be responsible for the transition arrangements. Chairman. Director, I asked a very specific question. That is, which bureau would be responsible for the work? Is it the CMAB or the administration wing? The administration wing would be responsible for the setting up of the office. And we will coordinate the establishment and financial arrangements. The manpower would be deployed by the Civil Service Bureau. The Chief Executive Elect's office would operate on its own. It's not under any bureau. And on the first of July, there will be a seamless transition. Senior staff would be would transition to the new Chief Executive's office. In terms of the establishment of a new term of government, including any government reorganization, Pico would be responsible for the overall coordination. And in the past, the work would also involve the CMAB. And when it comes to government restructuring, the administration wing would have a role to play as well. So we would take care of our respective ambitions. Ms. Doris Ho.
I would answer the question on the reorganization of the government. And on the twelfth of January, the Chief Executive attended the Let's Go Questions and Answers session. She talked about the government or the reorganization of policy bureaus. Subsequently, we issued a paper to explain how we can rationalize government organization to enhance the policy-making process. We explained the details in that paper. Once we have a chief executive elect, that is after May the eighth.
Once we have a Chief Executive Elect, that is after May the eighth, we will submit the government's proposal as well as views from Leshco members to the incoming Chief Executive to see if he has any views or suggestions. And after that, we will go through various Leshco panels. We might brief panels on our proposals and any changes. And we will go to the establishments of committee as well for changes in establishment. And if new policy bureaus are to be set up, costs will be incurred and as such, we need to go to the finance committee as well. For statutory functions that will be transferred from one surgery to another, legislative amendment is needed. And as such, we need to go to the council as well. So this is a three-step process. Time might be a little tight, but this is our target nonetheless. We have drawn up a timetable. And we believe we have enough time to go through all these procedures so that the Chief Executive Elect can form his own cabinet. Mr. Yu Pudler. Thank you. Am I coming through? Yes. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Ma Feng Quox's question, that is, C S O zero zero eight. Many members of the public try to locate certain records, but they were not found in our archives. For libraries managed by the L C S D. Is there a mechanism in place for parties or members of the public to request the acquisition of historical archives or records? Yes, a mechanism is in place. I would defer to Deputy Director of Administration, Mr. Bobby Chang. Thank you for the question. Since two thousand nine, the G R S has been procuring copies of archival records from other places. As to whether we consider the views of users, the answer is yes. We acquired more than four thousand records from overseas archives. So for those who request some records from our archives, as we acquire new records, we would consider their views or suggestions. So we did take their comments into consideration. Many of the records we acquired were requested by users. Thank you. Any other questions from members? If not, that's all for the morning session. We will continue in the afternoon from two P M. Please attend on time. It will be chaired by Mr. Ronny Chen. Thank you.